Okay, I'm going to call this, this meeting the workshop order. This is the workshop adjourned meeting of the City Council. And we'll note that all council members are present. And we will have a council workshop regarding the San Antonio Creek Trail Plan. So who wants to lead off on this one? Ed?
I have a Zoom presentation for you this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Doing the presenting tonight will be Lydia Kennesalar with, I forget the name of the company, Alta. So Lydia, I'm handing it over to you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so pleased to be here this evening. My name is Lydia Kennesalar and I'm with Alta Planning and Design. And we have had the privilege of working with the city of Montclair over the past year on the San Antonio Creek feasibility study. You may recall my presentation about a month or two ago to City Council where I provided a comprehensive overview of the project. And tonight, I'm here to create some additional space for any questions that council might have on this, the study that I can help to answer. Okay. So a quick overview. For those who perhaps were unable to join the last meeting, or as a refresher, since it's been a little bit since we saw each other, a quick overview. So the San Antonio Creek Trail feasibility study is a planning level document. And so the final product for this project is a report. And this project did not involve developing detailed design plans or any of the planning for construction. That will come in the next phase of the project. So the main purpose of our study is feasibility, exactly as it sounds. Where is it feasible to build this trail? Where is there enough space to fit the trail? And what sorts of destinations like parks and schools do we want to connect? As part of this study, we also collected community and stakeholder input throughout the different project stages to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the people who live in Montclair want to see in the future. And so the feasibility study report document, this is a summary of all the work that we have completed over the past year. And in addition to talking about, you know, those feasibility questions of where the trail can go, what we heard from the community, and generally what the trail will look like, we also have information about kind of the next steps that come now that this project has concluded. So a big piece of that is the funding piece. And thinking about how we go about designing and building the trail and what steps the city needs to take. So as part of our study, we thought about long and short-term approaches to the project. As I'm sure many of you know, receiving competitive grants is one great way to help build out infrastructure in your city. So we know that Sunset Park recently received a grant award that will fund a portion of the San Antonio Creek Trail. And the Trammell Crow development property that's at the north end of the channel, that will also fund a portion. But the remainder, the city will need to seek funding to do that additional design and construction work. So that's why we are thinking about what you see in the map here, kind of the green alignment that goes north and south, green and yellow, that's immediately adjacent to the trail. And then the blue and purple pieces, those are how we potentially work around those major barriers like the 10 freeway, to use the street network of the city to provide pedestrian access around those barriers. And those are sorts of things that can be funded through active transportation grants and be implemented in a shorter timeframe than might happen with an overcrossing that would require constructing a bridge over the 10 freeway, for example. So we wanted to give the city a range of options to consider that can be implemented in the near term and in the long term, looking at those more permanent solutions to cross And so I wanted to provide a quick kind of overview. Oops, excuse me just a minute. Here we go. Interesting. Bear with me for just a minute while I try to advance this next slide. Hold on, I'm going to stop sharing. Okay, and now I'm going to reshare. Thanks so much for your patience. Okay, so I think that should be it. So I wanted to provide a quick overview of kind of the timeline and phases that were included in this study. So at the top of this graphic, you can see all of the different things that were included in the feasibility study. So the first step, the first phase of the project, we took a look at all of the existing conditions to figure out where could the trail work and where could it not work? And then in the second phase, we really thought closely about all of our different options and weighed community input. And now we have Phase Three. We are at that stage right now where we have the final report, which includes all of the information that the city could use to take things to everything you see in the bottom half of this graphic. So that includes working with the city's grant writing team to figure out how to apply for those grant funds that will support that detailed design and ultimately the construction of the trail itself. And so, you know, with these different steps, it's really important to, oops, excuse me, think about how you can leverage the grants that have already been awarded to make this project really appealing for funding sources like the Caltrans ATP grant. And that's going to allow you to get to the types of details that are not covered in feasibility study. So in that next phase, the city will be thinking about things that are more detailed, like how many benches might this trail need? Where should the bike racks go? What specific species of trees and shrubs will be planted? And how you're going to work on those details of your safety plan to incorporate things like security cameras and so forth. So once the trail is built, we're also going to think about the maintenance of the trail. So that will be something that happens and becomes part of the city's maintenance regime like with all of its parks. So again, that's something that you're going to work out in the next phase of the project to really come up with a plan that is going to work in the long term for the city. Okay. And so I hope that that kind of provided some additional details about kind of the limits of this study and all of the exciting detail that comes at the next phase. And I'd love to answer any additional questions that City Council has about the contents of the feasibility study or, you know, kind of professional advice that I can provide about how to take things to the next step. Thanks so much.
Oh, great. Let's do this. Let's go back to your last page two slide real fast.
Sure.
All right. And unfortunately, I don't know if you can make this map a little bigger or not, but if you can't, then we'll work with it.
Okay. Let me give that a try here.
Okay, that should be, oops.
All right. Is that looking a little better?
Yeah, it's a little better. So let's start with, let's start at the, the top end over there at Transit Center. And so I believe there's, the ultimate goal, the long-term goal is for the trail to go along the channel, starting at the Pacific Trail and going south towards Arrow Highway. And because there are some barriers right now at the railroad track, it requires us to do this alternate plan. I believe that's for both bicycles and pedestrians on the, where it's labeled, where it's marked in pink, or pink or purple, probably purple. And that, so that's the alternate plan for right now in that section?
Yes.
And so essentially, somewhere on the Pacific Trail, we'll have to go towards Mona Vista Avenue, both bicycle and pedestrian. And then they'll go to Arrow Highway, and then they'll reconnect onto the, to the Channel Trail, if you want to call it. There are Arrow and the Channel. Am I correct? And then they'll proceed.
Yes.
The way it works, in that, in that Greenway Trail, and then whatever it's called. And then, and then it'll go all the way down to San Jose, San Jose Street, and that, that generates the second barrier because of the freeway. And is that, again, a both pedestrian and bicycle, or that's strictly bicycle only?
So this uses the city's existing street network. So there are sidewalks already on these streets.
Right.
So if someone is walking, they'll just use the sidewalk. And if someone is riding a bicycle, then they'll use on-street bike facilities.
Right, but as far as the alternate plan in place, between San Jose Street and Palo Verde, that'll be a future phase. So that, until we get the funds we need to create that connection at the 10 freeway, then that would not be available as part of, for bicycles or for pedestrians in the alternative period.
Right. So in, in the short term, because you can't cross the 10 freeway at this without an over, undercrossing, yes, this would not be accessible portion next to the creek.
But the long.
Connect south.
Right. The long-term plan is for both bicycle and pedestrian access to go underneath the I-10 undercross. That's the long-term plan.
That's correct.
Okay. And then we get to Palo Verde Street then, and then the trail will continue on. And this is the long, short-term, long-term. And I believe it goes all the way towards Hope Boulevard, which is being, is the next barrier where the alter, an alternative, short-term plan pops up.
Yes, that's right. So scrolling down just a little bit, that's right, at Hope Boulevard.
And the area there is, is the railroad tracks.
Yes.
So the plan here is the alternate plan for both pedestrian and for bicycles is Holt, Ramona, and Mission, essentially.
Correct.
Until we, until we put a, I believe in this case, it's, it's a bridge over the railroad tracks is the, that'll be the, the long-term plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, that's a lot more understanding than it was before. So any questions on that, on the trail itself and the council? Anybody got any questions on that? Because that would have my, some of my confusion at the first workshop.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add a couple of modifications, if we can go to the top of the map and talk about the first two alternatives. So at the, at the Pacific Electric Bike Trail headway, what we're talking about here is a route that would, until we can build an overpass across the MetroLink and Gold Line tracks, we would have to take this alternative route. But what we're talking about now is actually having the developer, Trammell Crow, still do the development of that length of the trail. And then there would be a crossover to what is currently the impound lot right now for vehicles, as well as the parking facility that was previously utilized by some of the auto dealerships in Montclair. So the alternative route would then take you into those parking lots, would go along the south side, heading east, and then come under the existing underpass, the bridge that is there now, rather.
Okay.
And then come back up onto the north side of the Montclair Police Department parking lot. So no one would actually be on Mona Vista Avenue for any length of time, nor would they be on Arrow Highway. So they would cross over on the backside of the Police Department parking lot, going west, to the west side of the police facility. And then they would head south towards Arrow Highway and then reconnect at the Pacific Electric Trail.
Is there a, is there a security area at the PD to do that?
Well, there isn't now. We would have to build that as part of our project going forward.
Oh, have to build it, okay.
And then at the I-10 freeway, as you know, there's an existing undercrossing there right now. I've been in conversation with Mona Vista Water District. Right now, the underpassing is blocked by a large pipe, which is about, oh, five feet in diameter, maybe even a little bit larger than that. It is a Mona Vista Water District pipe. And in our conversation, they can either hang the pipe off of the side of the channel, but that would involve the Army Corps of Engineers. And so what we're talking about right now is that Mona Vista Water District and the city would jointly work together to underground that pipe below the pathway. We need to lower the pathway anyway so that we can create the 10-foot vertical clearance we need between the pathway and the ceiling of the underside of the I-10 freeway. So working with Mona Vista Water District, we would create both that lower pathway and underground the pipe underneath that pathway, so we would not have to bring in the Army Corps of Engineers. And that would then open up the underpass for this route to continue. We've also pointed out to Caltrans that there is a similar undercrossing in Pomona at College Street. And that pathway basically accommodates exactly what we would like to see here, including well-maintained, undercross, undercrossing and gated at both ends. And so Caltrans understands that that's our objective for this undercrossing. So we think that this is a shorter-term alternative, as opposed to a longer-term one, as long as we have all these parts come into place.
Okay. All right. Okay, I will move on to the next one here. I have safety and lighting. And obviously, one of the questions I've heard from residents is safety. And I know that this project, when it's done in phases, first of all, the project itself talks about the lighting, placing lighting. And I know, Ed, you indicated there that there will be cameras along the trail, especially, especially at the tunnels you just talked about there at the 10 freeway. And then when we do this in phases, I believe that members of the public will be involved in, involved in this when we, we put together the, the designs and the construction plans and put it out for bid. Does that include where adjacent owners will be invited to participate in those, provide input on the designs and then to ensure that their concerns of safety, especially along their black, their back walls, are secured and et cetera, Ed?
So that has already been part of the process, even in the development of the feasibility study. We've already had community input at various city functions, and we will continue to follow that process going forward.
Right, but this is, this is the big picture, but, you know, y'all know when you do construction, and it's much more detail, and that's when the neighbors get a little more interested in, because they want to know how the construction will be done, how it's going to impact them. But also, in this case, ensuring that their properties will be, will be secured and will be safe. And so my question.
Precisely.
My question to you, Ed, is as we're doing this in phases, are we going to at least get the adjoining property owners involved and at least they can have an input on the construction phase when it comes to safety?
Yes, as I indicated, we would continue to follow that process going forward as we do each phase.
All right, so that's an expectation I'll have as we move forward with this project then. And then I know you mentioned maintenance will be handled by city staff, it'll be city staff's responsibility. So Ed, let me ask you this question next. I know we have, the first phase essentially is at Sunset, Sunset Park. And what do you anticipate future phases looking at? What areas?
Well, it would be dependable, well, the, the next phase would obviously be the Trammell Crow Vulcan property-related phase.
Right.
And then after that, it would just be based on the funding that we are able to obtain and the cooperation that we receive with the various property owners. So for example, when it comes to the area where the Chino Basin Water Conservation District is, we had hoped and expected that we would have the participation of the, of the Chino Basin Water Conservation District in developing the side of the trail adjacent to their property. That's not the case. They've not indicated to us that they're willing to cooperate with the city in that regard. So that could be a phase that is later than what we otherwise would have expected. Clearly, the pathways south of Holt Boulevard will be a later phase because of the issues related to that area. So the concentration will be probably mostly between Holt Boulevard and the I-10 freeway as a separate effort. And then going forward in relation to piggybacking off of the Trammell Crow project, we will be working that area separately as well. So effectively, I would define it as two separate segments. The area between the Pacific Electric Bike Trail and the I-10 freeway, and the second segment from the I-10 freeway south to Holt Boulevard. And then the following segments would be south of Holt Boulevard.
Okay. All right, I think those are all the questions I have from the first workshop. And, you know, overall, looks good, you know, the plan looks good. There was a lot of thought placed into it. You know, make this very pleasing, pleasant for the community to utilize, and of course, at the same time, make sure it's safe for, for the, especially the adjoining residents. So I'm okay to move forward with this, this plan here. I believe it comes back to City Council for ratification. Ed?
Well, each phase submitted for development would come to the City Council.
This plan here, are we approving this plan? Are you asking for approval of this plan tonight, or?
Well, this is a workshop, so you don't really approve plans, but this is just a, this is a conceptual feasibility study. We would bring it back to you for receipt and file.
At a council meeting.
At a council meeting. And then we would bring back each phase subsequent to that.
That's what I meant. Okay. So any questions by council members here? Mayor Pro Temru?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments as well as questions. One, in looking at this, and I don't know if the consultant is still with us.
Yes, hi.
Okay, are we planning to have some way that people can rent bicycles and also e-bicycles? Not just at the MetroLink station, but perhaps in another midpoint along this?
So if I may answer, we as staff are already working along those lines. We've already been contacted by Bird to introduce e-scooters in the city. An extension of that would ultimately be e-bicycles as well. So long-term, the answer is yes. But clearly, getting this entire length of this trail developed would be essential for making that workable as far as people wanting to rent and use that. Whether they would use it for smaller segments, we don't know. And we'll be coming back to the council with a proposal related to Bird. We believe that it will be effectively restricted to the North Montclair segment initially before it's phased to other areas. And the way that the company operates now is that the e-devices themselves have a, a software configuration built in them that limits them to specific areas. You can expand that area based on your agreement with a particular company, and in this case, Bird. But those are issues that we would have to work out. And certainly, using the San Antonio Creek Trail would be an area that we would welcome the use of these e-devices.
It certainly wouldn't be something instantly, but I think if you're looking at this over time, you would need more than one point along this trail to rent a bicycle. Some people may not go up to MetroLink. As far as funding it, I will tell you my bias. I'm not in favor of having the development community have to pay fees or any way fund this. The affordability issue is outrageous as it is, and that just adds to the cost of any development that's going in. I would much prefer we look to state park grants, there are pollution mitigation grants, it was already mentioned about transportation grants, there are other ways to do this, and I think that would be the better way to do it. Developers have enough put on them as it is, and it's driving the cost of everything out of the, out of this world. I would concur what the mayor said about the residents who live along there, working with them on the noise and safety issues. If they want any advice on how to do that, certainly talk to the neighbors who live along the I-10, because they had none of that. So they could easily tell you what should have been done and what should be done over in here. I wish the time and consideration with my neighbors was as great as it will be with this non-intrusive trail. In looking at the alignment, it seems fine. I do have a concern in some areas about east-west motor vehicle traffic. Are we going to do something where the bicyclists may have to stop as well as the motorists?
Well, if they're crossing a street, yes, they would have to be observant of traffic moving in the opposite direction. So we would certainly be looking at appropriate signage to enhance the recognition of both the pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as the motorists, as they meet at those various intersections. And if I may just quickly address the issue about the developer. Along the length of this, the only developer that we anticipate will be part of this is the Trammell Crow project related to the Vulcan property. And the developer was already going to develop the side, on the east side of the, I'm sorry, the west side of the channel, to enhance the overall appearance of their project. So they actually welcomed the idea of developing that length of the trail. That was, while it is a condition, it was something the developer wanted to do.
That's good to hear they wanted to do it, because I certainly don't want to see in the future that they have to fund all of this. So getting back to the traffic issue, east-west vehicular traffic, bicyclists, bicyclists are pretty much traveling north and south. Will there be some type of a sign that lets people, you know, some of the bicyclists know to stop? I've been in areas where they have them, and these bicyclists just keep coming through with complete disregard to the automobile traffic. Bicycles and cars can coexist rather well, they do in other parts of the world. And I, I want to know what we will do to make sure that something is done so that everybody, cars can move in the direction they need to move, and bicycles can move in the direction they need to move.
Sure, I can provide a little bit of detail about what's included in the plan that helps to provide that guidance. So the kind of two phases that Ed pointed out, those are possible because the trail crosses at the same grade as the city's existing roadway network across so many the east-west moving streets. So at, there's a section of the document that includes guidance for what type of signage, what type of striping, and what type of potentially flashing beacons or hawks might make sense at those crossings to make sure that people driving and people biking are crossing in a way that's safe for everybody.
Because it's, it's important that we have the east-west traffic moving efficiently as well.
Yes.
I can see situations where traffic can be held up all day. I mean, I had an issue today, had nothing to do with bikes, but traveling westbound on Palo Verde at Central, the traffic was backed up to Exeter Avenue because of the light. I can see where people would be backed up even more, waiting for bicyclists to stop so the car can go through, and the cars to stop to let the bicyclists go through.
Yes, so fortunately, very, a large number of the streets that intersect the creek are lower-capacity neighborhood streets. And at the streets that have higher traffic volumes, of course, any changes to the roadway as part of the funding that you apply for in your grant-seeking process, you're going to want to think about including traffic studies into that to make sure that any adjustments or new signals that might be required for that safe bike crossing, to look at what the traffic impact would be for those. So that's something that can be included in the next phase of the project to make sure that planning is happening in a way that's going to promote connectivity for people you. to make sure that planning is happening in a way that's going to promote connectivity for people using all modes.
Because in looking at this, I can see almost every east-west street, Arrow, Moreno, our gateway to the Montclair Plaza, San Jose, Palo Verde, San Bernardino, Benito, Orchard, Kingsley, certainly Holt, all have high-traffic volumes on them, and we'd have to make sure we do something so that we handle the situation of bikes and cars.
Yeah, and I want to point out that the number of the streets that you named were already have elementary schools on them, and so traffic circulation in those areas is already of priority concern. And in fact, the kind of modifications that we would be making would actually enhance safety on Moreno Street, for example, and San Jose Street, as well as many of the other streets. So we hope and expect that on the streets themselves, we'll be following the manual-on-uniform traffic control devices. But on the trails, because they are not necessarily subject to MUTCD restrictions, we can enhance those trails with additional types of signage. And as Lydia indicated, beacon lights, that sort of thing, that we otherwise would not be able to use on city streets.
Yes, if I may add, I, on page 76 of your, I know you received the, I don't know if you have it in front of you, or it was posted in the website as part of this workshop. But there's like an example of what we're, of what a crossing would look like. And it does include a lot of signage, flashing beacons. So we would have to do this as we do the design for each of these connections.
So there will be a stop to tell a bicyclist, this is a crossing, stop.
Yes.
And a car, this is a bike crossing, stop. Because, you know, I can see where this would just back up traffic. And I know there's a desire among many cities to just try to force people onto the freeways. Well, that's not going to happen. I use surface streets all the time, east and west. They're already congested enough as it is, and people don't know how to drive as it is. That's why it's adding bicyclists there. So if there's clearly something that tells the bicyclists to stop, that would be helpful.
Again, this is something that we will look into as part of the design and process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Overall, the concept of this doesn't bug me. I understand the objective. There are some reasons that I think that I don't like, in the sense that I know that it was stated in the press and in even our budget summary that we got, that the goal is to move residents that live nearby the trail to get away from using cars and walking to locations. Well, along this particular trail, if that's the goal, to get residents away from using their cars and walking to locations, we're talking along the length of the trail, and Ramona Avenue is close to this trail, there really is no destination for residents to use this trail to go to. You have to get in your car to go to State of Brothers or Carthens Market to shop, so that defeats the purpose. I can see this trail working perhaps to its greatest extent in the northern part of Montclair, where we have the higher development and the North, Montclair Downtown specific plan. That seems ideal. As we get into the heartland of the city, which at its core is our residential community, I just don't see a need for this. I really don't.
Sure. Oh, sorry. Please finish your thought.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that the purpose of this trail is to provide additional ways, additional choices for people to make in how they choose to move around in the city. And one of the big pieces of feedback that we got from the community survey is that people are excited to use this for recreational purposes. So sure, some people might use it to access different areas of the city, to connect destinations. But most of the folks that we interacted with at our community workshops through our virtual survey and other ways that we connected said they want to jog, they want to walk their dogs, they want to ride their bike for exercise. And they see this as a really great amenity that would make Montclair a place that has an exciting premier recreational system.
Well, that said, conversely, we have existing parks that our residents in the last election stated are a priority amongst renovations and investments in. And we have hired a consultant who's looking at all of our existing parks to see what areas we'd need to better and enhance them. I, I think we should give our existing parks a shot at first, to allow these residents to do their recreation first. I, unless, I know the argument might be that this trail would be a complement to that or provide a means of transportation to get to the parks. However, I am of the belief that the majority of our residents, if they want to utilize some form of recreation, they do currently walk to the existing parks, be them Saratoga, Sunset, you name it. I just, I'm afraid of the potential for this to be underused, and as a result, it be neglected. And of course, time will tell whether I'm right or wrong on that. Kind of piggybacking on the mayor's comment regarding residential or residents' input on the trail as time goes on. In the, in a May 4th Daily Bulletin article, it stated that the trail would have to go through residential neighborhoods, or at least some properties that would be affected. And I'm concerned about, and it mentioned something about buying up rights-of-way, buying up rights-of-way, and that's an exact quote. So are we going to eminent domain properties and take away land from?
No, no, that's part of the feasibility study process that we went through. We took a very close look at existing property ownership and potential for, you know, where is, are there parcels that can be worked with that do not require eminent domain? So we want to be clear that this is not setting the stage for, you know, taking control of property from people. We've included information regarding the public right-of-way and potential for easements that would not require, you know, direct purchase of land by the city. It's building upon the easement system that currently exists for some portions of the trail. Yes, so actually, the channel is owned by, mostly by the, or controlled by the Army Corps of Engineers. So there's an existing easement throughout the whole channel. So we would obtain an easement on the size of the channel for trail purposes only. So we wouldn't be taking, we wouldn't, we couldn't take any property.
Well, thanks for addressing that, because that was a major concern of mine. Since you mentioned the Army Corps of Engineers, they're a little bit, well, no, they're greatly laborious in their process. And even to a snail's pace is, they tend to act upon issues like this. And I know that from serving on the Vector Control District and the right to access even some basins and whatnot. So I would hope that they would be at least amenable and workable and not delay. But that said, I still, I don't hear residents on the street in conversation that if I bump into them at a restaurant or the store or whatnot, bringing this up as to, my God, I can't wait for this trail to be done. I do hear a lot about speed bumps, and I do hear a lot about signage, and I hear about, you know, police, fire, park issues. When is the senior center going to open up? When are we going to get some sense of normalcy? Those are the hot-button issues that I hear from residents. This is not one. I've only maybe heard one resident bring it up. But the majority of them are not. So we got a grant for 4.2 million to basically enact a pilot program for this trail at Sunset Park. I would like us to slow this down and wait till that phase is fully developed. We see how residents utilize it. But we also address issues that may involve, may involve the the demand on police calls or fire calls, demand on code enforcement, because I'm afraid we're going to see an increased trend of graffiti on some of these spots of the trail. I, I just think that we're going to have an increased demand for police, code enforcement personnel, and to some extent, excuse me, some extent, fire. That is going to be a drain even more so on our budget. And I would rather us see the fruition of Sunset Park's version of this, see how it pans out, do a good study on its usage, see if it is actually worth the money that was put into it, find out what our ongoing city costs are going to be before we just give carte blanche to this idea and say, let's just do it throughout the city for three miles. I, and part of that plays into my prior concern last time, is if we go under the 10 freeway, if we go there now, I'm sure everyone here on council and staff has been there, under the 10 freeway as it exists now, if you're going to walk underneath, I am concerned about crime. Because you have folks that may take advantage of the situation because they're not in plain view. They're underground, and there is some degree of them being hidden. So innocent bystanders that are walking, taking legitimate advantage of the trail could be subject to those that want to take an inappropriate disadvantage of the trail. And there was a statement, I'm not sure if it came from Ed or Lydia or whatnot, that there would be cameras in use along the portion of this trail. Where would those cameras be? How often are we going to have cameras in sight? And I'm only looking at you because you're in front of me, so I'm talking in general. So that's, you're just a point of reference. And are those cameras going to be viewed 24/7 to tamper down or try to get on top of any potential proliferation of crime, be it small or major? That's my concern with respect to that portion of the trail. Now, I believe it was stated last time, there would be gates that would lock up this trail after a certain number of hours, which is great. But I want to know, and maybe I'm thinking too far ahead, I want to know what is, what deterrents are going to be put in place so folks don't try to access the trail late at night so they can wreak havoc or exchange illegal activity, like we currently have at Sunset Park at night? Now, I have residents that live on Greenwood around that area there, I believe, in, near Sunset. They do tell me where they see exchanges of drugs in the park. They find needles and devices of sexual nature in the park. They find other stuff, liquor bottles and whatnot. So it's activity, inappropriate activities happening there. And I'm concerned that this trail is going to provide them another longer access for that to happen, which will then increase our demand. So that the tunnel does concern me. And I would like to know how long the cameras would be on 24/7? How long are they going to be reviewed and looked at so we can try to deter crime? I have been a big proponent of us going to grants to try to offset anything that we might spend. However, it is, that too is a laborious process, and it may not be timely to meet the demands of this trail. If we're going to wait for whatever department we're seeking a grant or entity from, they may not get us an answer back in time. I mean, look what, how long it's taken for us to hear with respect for grants for a potential fire engine. We're still waiting. So those are my concern. I'm not totally against the proposal. I just have a lot more concerns that outweigh right now the benefit that I, that I am hearing. With that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything at the moment.
I just want to say this, that, you know, I think a trail is good for a community. Community wants recreation. They want to be outdoors. They want to be able to walk their dogs. And I believe if you build this, they will come. This is a very long-term process. It's not going to happen in a short period of time. Obviously, Sunset will be the beginning stage of this, and then probably the next one will be there at the, next to the MetroLink station. So it's, it, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of detail is planned. There's a lot of focus on making sure it's safe. Yes, we have those issues too, as you brought up, in the community. But I also believe that, you know, people want to get out. People want to, they want to take their kids someplace and have some fun. And not necessarily having to get in the car and drive someplace else to have that. So, and it is also a connect to the Pacific Rail Trail. And that creates opportunities for people who want to ride their bikes from other communities or walk other communities and come here to Montclair. You know, enhances our residential neighborhoods too. Well, that's, you know, make, you know, it makes Montclair like we are the city of the future. We are trying to bring in stuff for our future. So, you know, this, again, like I said, this project is going to take a long time to build. And, but overall, I think at the end of the day, there are risks, yes. But I think at the end of the day, if we do nothing, then what will we accomplish by doing nothing? We got to do just something, take our chances. That's part of what cities got to do, is take risks. So I have a, I have a Councilman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor DeTrin. So I would agree with the mayor that we are going to be developing the city, bringing in more residents, more housing, especially housing units that won't necessarily have a backyard for children and pets to run around and stretch their legs. And this trail provides an opportunity to safely access the Montclair Trans Center, the Pacific Electric Trail, and the mall and the other development in the northern part of the city. And, you know, to the point that this is another opportunity for crime. You know, the example that was given was crime that's occurring in the parks. So there's going to be crime everywhere, whether it's in the parks, whether it's on the trail. And the best way that I think would deter the crime is to give our residents something to do, such as walking, riding their bikes, having access to parks and the mall. And my only question would be, has there been any consideration for an extension of the trail to the east, particularly around the southern part of the city where it would be a longer distance? Maybe around Holt or Orchard?
Sure. So as part of this study, we took a close look at the city's recently completed active transportation plan. And there, this is the premier space, the San Antonio Creek Channel. This is the place for an off-street trail in the city. But there's tremendous opportunity for east-west on-street bike connections that are very well-covered in the city's active transportation plan. So one of the great things about, you know, the north-south nature of the creek is that any east-west street that connects, that is in the city's bike plan, there's a potential to have a direct connection from this future trail to an on-street bike network that can, to your point, create that access for community members to, you know, enjoy this new recreational amenity.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So I think at this point, I think we've heard all the comments, everyone spoke. And just to now move to the City Council level, at a City Council meeting will be a receive and file a document for our consideration at that time. So do we have any members of the public, the public who speak?
I was going to say there is a public comment.
I'm sorry? Okay, we'll take that. It's time for...
Okay, this is Bruce Culp.
And it'd be five minutes for Bruce.
Thank you. So apparent that several of our city council members have never been on a trail before, based on their comments. And so I encourage those that are making negative comments to get out on the Pacific Electric Trail. See what, see the hundreds of residents throughout this community, not just Montclair, but throughout all of these cities. And see the joy in the families that are enjoying the trail, pet walking, cycling, people training for runs, people getting healthy. I think Montclair has a large desire to, to have a healthy Montclair program. This will enhance that. So, you know, there was a mention that they don't hear much about the residents talking about it. Well, I don't know if you've ever been to the Paseos or the Kendra or Arrow Station, but those residents are actively using trails and running and biking in the northern area of town. Maybe you should speak with them. Maybe you should speak with them. They're excited about this project. I talk to them every day. There are many, many people that are looking forward to this trail. There was mention about the, the cars and, you know, street interactions, street places where people go up, go along the Pacific Electric Trail and see how the traffic, street signals work and how they allow safe passage from, on the trail at Pacific Electric Trail on Central, Monte Vista, Benson, all throughout, all throughout the cities. All, all the cities around here are intersected by Pacific Electric Trail, all the way to Rialto. And somehow, people need, figure out a way to safely get across the trail and interact, the cars know how to stop and allow bicyclists, families walking across and stuff like that. Lastly, there's been mention about, you know, what does it connect? And I think that was mentioned by Lopez, as far as, you know, what would this connect to? Well, schools and parks is what they seem to be connecting people to, which is what we want people to get to. We want people to get to the parks and enjoy it. We want to get to school, you know, we want a safer route to school away from cars. A trail does that, gets you off the streets and onto a safe place where children can walk back and forth up and down the trail. I know it doesn't go where you want to, Mr. Lopez, which is to, you know, sexually harass employees. You're right, probably for you, it doesn't have a place there. But it does have a place for the rest of the families that are in here. As far as safety, you know, you were wrong about the Greyhound bus coming to MetroLink Center, or North Montclair Trans Center, hasn't been any increase in safety there or crime. So, I suspect that you're wrong on this. And I go up and down the Pacific Electric Trail, I see no crime occurring, or at a minimum, no, no more than any other regular crime and safety issues there. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'm going to adjourn, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. And so, we adjourn the meeting as, as of right now, so.